Call the meeting to order. I have 7:04 PM. We do have amendments to the agenda. We will be putting discussion of CDBG grants under Section 5, Old Business. And then Gus, did you want to propose to the group? Or are you fine with leaving it at 10:00 or what did you?
You know, I'm fine with leaving it at 10:00.
Okay. Okay, yeah. So do we have a motion to approve the agenda with the amendment?
I move to approve the agenda as amended.
You got a second? You're muted, Angie. I can see you talking. All right, go ahead and vote by roll call.
Sorry, I had to unmute me. Okay, here we go. Counselor Bedwell?
Yes.
Counselor Casares?
Aye.
Counselor Seja?
Yes.
Counselor Purdy?
Aye.
Counselor Sinney?
Aye.
Mayor Clevenger?
Aye.
Okay, that's a unanimous vote yes.
So first, we have a presentation from Jackie Leung.
Hi, everybody. So hello, Mayor and city councilors. My name is Jackie Leung. I'm a city councillor actually in Salem, Oregon. I requested this opportunity to speak with you today, introduce myself as a candidate for Oregon, House District 19, and that also includes on your so excuse my kids in the background which you just heard. I hope to be able to have the opportunity to meet with you by video or in person to get to know you better. I just wanted to say thank you for this opportunity and I'm looking forward to getting to know you all. Thank you.
There we go. I was muted. Next, we have public comment. Do we have anyone who wishes to make public comment?
I'm not seeing. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I believe just for those that are not panelists, if you'd like to, if your attendees and you want to make a comment, you can either type into the chat that you'd like to do that and we'll bring you into the room. Or I believe there's a little feature to raise your hand, either one. Correct. I'm not seeing anything. So if there's no public comment, we will move on to the consent agenda. Does everybody get a chance to read through everything from last meeting? So any questions, comments, concerns about any of it?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, vote by roll call.
Counselor Bedwell?
Yes.
Counselor Casares?
Aye.
Counselor Seja?
Yes.
Counselor Purdy?
Aye.
Counselor Sinney? Counselor Sinney?
Aye.
Mayor Clevenger?
Aye.
And that's a unanimous vote yes.
All right, we have no public hearings under Old Business. I believe it got sent out to everyone. The draft cooperation agreement for community development, bleh, can't talk today, community development block grant funds, which we had discussed earlier and stated that we wanted to take part in this. This was just the actual agreement that needs to be approved and signed. Everybody get a chance to read through it? Anybody have any questions, issues?
I can give just a quick minute or two background. As council knows, Marion County applied to be an entitlement county for the purpose of receiving CDBG dollars, community development block grant dollars. Previously, those dollars were administered through Business Oregon. And we were given the option to either join in with Marion County's CDBG program or continue with Business Oregon's CDBG program. We've been working with Marion County staff. This is a new program to them, but they're really excited about it. What it does, it does allow a little bit more localized control over the distribution of a set dollar amount from CDBG. It does, to some extent, when you become an entitlement county, it lowers the amount of award that's possible within that entity or that county, but it is a fixed amount each year. Marion County, the contract that's before you is largely taken from CDBG's requirements. There's a little bit of add-ons that Marion County put in as far as the authority, the group. But really what this is right now is simply, we're agreeing to be part of their entitlement group. And this is basically what CDBG requires. This did get sent off to our city legal counsel. I haven't heard anything back from him. I will double check with him before we actually execute and sign the contract. But I don't think we can change any of this contract. I think most of it comes right from HUD. And so that's, I guess that's kind of it in a nutshell. If we decided not to be part of the Marion County entitlement, really, the only negative to that would be if we were, if we had an entity within the city that was drawing on participants in a lower income bracket outside the city. Those outside the city, Marion County rural folks would not be allowed to be counted as part of that block grant application. So as an example, something like a food bank or a senior center. If Marion County became an entitlement county and we were not part of that, and they wanted to apply for funds, they would have to limit their application strictly to the folks within the city that met that threshold. I think it's kind of straightforward. It's like, we said, we haven't been able to really access dollars through Business Oregon. This is a three-year commitment. So once we're in, we're in for three years.
Based on what I read, I support us entering into this agreement. We had talked about it previously and we agree at this degree. We entered the agreement, if it doesn't work out the way we want it to, we're locked in for three years and next time we don't do it. It's really that simple. So did you want an actual motion, Ron, or did you just want our approval?
Yeah, I think we, I think we need a motion authorizing the city to enter into the contract.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize the city to enter into the contract for the CBDG grant funds.
Seconded.
All right, vote by roll call.
Okay, Counselor Bedwell?
Yes.
Counselor Casares?
Aye.
Counselor Seja?
Yes.
Purdy?
Aye.
Counselor Sinney?
Aye.
And Mayor Clevenger?
Aye.
And that is a unanimous vote yes?
Moving on, new business, city administrator evaluation discussion. So as the council knows, Della had sent out the evaluation forms after the last meeting. And her and I got to talking about it and there's a little confusion, really just between her and I as we were talking about it, the process we should be using. And it seems to me that in the past, it was, there wasn't really any, any policy guiding how the evaluation was done. And I think when I talked to Della, you know, in the past, it was done every other year. And it was done in August. And per Ron's contract, it's actually supposed to be annually in January. And so then Ron and I had discussed it and he was looking, I believe he wanted to move to March, Ron.
So, well, I believe it, I think, I think that might have just been an oversight when that was put into the contract left over from the previous contract. But March makes more sense. And the reason why I think March makes sense is because usually, non-COVID year, you would have gotten your state-of-the-city presentation from me with updates of where we were in the, in the last meeting in January, comparable to our goals and what we accomplished, as well as what continuing challenges we meet. And then usually in February, we would schedule, and we tried to schedule this year, our council retreat where we get together and we evaluate those goals and decide if we need to add or take away or tweak those goals. Now, that doesn't prevent council from developing goals and you all do throughout the year, but it's that goal-setting session that is, is kind of the guiding effort for either the year or the coming year. Some of the goals are two, three, four, five-year horizons, but a lot of them are one year. Let's see how we do and then make progress in the year. So it makes sense to be March. I don't think that's a significant change. I don't think the contract needs to be amended. I think we just need to set that as a target.
I agree with that. And the other concern I had expressed to Della is, you know, we do these types of evaluations all the time in the military. I'm sure Gus knows as well, doing NCORs and OERs. And one of the things that we do that I would like to implement into our own policy is, you know, on the military side, as each rating period begins, you have an established rating chain. Now, obviously, we are all evaluating Ron. But, you know, in the past, Della had always facilitated the evaluation period. I would like to see, at the beginning of each rated period for Ron, the council establishes who's going to be facilitating the evaluation for that period. And that is, that is Ron's point of contact for any concerns he has with his evaluation. Obviously, the council would still be doing it as a whole, but that individual will be the primary person facilitating it. And I think it would, it would make sense that we also implement a rule that the same person doesn't do it twice. So it's gradually changing. Obviously, we would want to take into consideration when there's an election year, you know, who, who is the person facilitating it. But one, that, that helps to kind of spread that knowledge and that responsibility around the council. We all get the ability to kind of learn how the process works. And two, it helps to alleviate any concerns about any impropriety in the evaluation because we have someone else who is facilitating it each and every time. Is there anybody who has any issues with that?
So are you proposing changing the, the way that people are submitting their, their evaluations? How they're conducting them? Are you looking at a new rating system?
No, the, the rating system would stay the same, that the form that we're using is the same one that's used for, for quite a few of the state agencies. I'm, I'm fine with that. The main thing would just be, like, for right now, what we would need is to determine who is going to be facilitating this evaluation that we will have our executive session on next meeting. And then at that meeting, we would also establish who is going to be the facilitator for the next year going forward.
So if I may, I have a recommendation. And since we're already in the process, I would say leave the process alone for this one. Leave it with Counselor Sinney. Just because that was established very early on and it's been talked about and we've started that process. I do like your idea of giving an opportunity at the executive meeting to maybe allow for somebody else to do it. So if Counselor Sinney wants to step down from that, or if at that meeting it's determined that, you know, nobody else really wants to do it and Counselor Sinney is still amenable to doing it. I just think changing the process now, when we're already in it, is actually not fair to Counselor Sinney and/or especially not fair to Ron. So I, I would be for leaving it, letting it go to its process and then having that discussion at the executive meeting.
But, and that's the thing, this, this rated period ends, you know, actually already ended. So, and I, when Della and I were talking about, I even said like, hey, it makes sense that you will probably be the one facilitating. Because she's also the only one on the council who's really done it before. So having her facilitate the next one. But moving forward, at this next executive session, we nominate someone who's going to handle it for the next year and so on and so forth. I believe Della said that she's been doing this since, was it, I think it was 2015, something along those lines. So I, I think in the, the interest of ensuring that Ron is always getting the most fair evaluation and kind of a CYA measure for us as the council, we do need to make sure it is a different person facilitating each year. And that's one of those things that if someone doesn't want to volunteer, then kind of the council volunteers those.
Another thing to think about too is that we know for a fact that three of these positions, three of the council positions will be, those individuals will be in those positions, coming into the next council and coming into the next, you know, performance evaluation period. So it really would boil down to those three individuals. Because you don't want to pick somebody who may or may not be here and start the process and having to change it. So that would be my one, for consistency, that would be a recommendation I put out.
And that's what I was saying about election years, you know, and that would be every other year, we're kind of cutting the, the number of people that are available to do it. But there's, there's enough positions that having a new person facilitate each year shouldn't be too terribly difficult.
Ron, you had a question or you had your hand up?
Yeah, I was just gonna make a comment. It seemed, a comment. It seems to me that the, the way that makes sense based on the discussions that you're engaged in right now is perhaps at the first meeting in January, we could just put this as a standing item on the agenda to discuss the evaluation and then assign somebody at that point because all the seats are filled. And so then you have a full complement of council and then you, based on whomever happens to be on the council at that particular moment, you could discuss it and assign somebody to that year's evaluation. That would give you a 90-day process to do an evaluation, which should be more than sufficient.
I'm, I'm fine with that. My concern right now is, you know, we already sort of missed one year and are quickly coming up on the next. So really, we're gonna, we're gonna owe you another evaluation pretty short order here.
Hopefully next March.
Go ahead, Angie.
So maybe I don't, maybe I'm not remembering. I don't, I remember we, like, we kind of discussed that the evaluation needed to be done. But I don't remember saying, I don't, like, and if I'm wrong, someone let me know. I don't remember deciding, like, who was gonna do it. And I don't understand why our mayor wouldn't be doing it. Like, the way that I understand things, the way that things are written right now, it really should be the mayor. So I, these are just my questions. So if I, if I miss something in a meeting that I don't remember, like, maybe, so let me know. But I don't remember deciding that, I know that it had to be done and we briefly talked about that, but I don't remember us deciding on who was going to do it.
So I can, based on the, the council protocols and on Ron's contract, it's, it's not stipulated. It just says, "An evaluation will be done," and that's really it. You know, I definitely don't, don't fault Della for taking the initiative to make sure that this is getting done. That's, that was the right thing. Granted, when it was delegated to her, that was a different council, a different city administrator. So even if we were gonna delegate it to one person, that's probably a conversation we should have had and it kind of slipped through the cracks, largely because we're all new and probably didn't really know better.
And if I may, we actually did have the conversation fairly early on. And as I recall, it was 2019 during our retreat. There was a little bit of a conversation then. And then there was some additional conversation further on through a couple of council meetings. So this, this is not new, but it hasn't been like the primary focus of our attention. But it was, there was a conversation and I remember there being, even a comment made from Della, hey, if somebody else wants to do this, you know, but, but at that time, nobody.
I'm just saying I don't remember the conversation.
So, no, for historical purposes, I just want to make sure you, I recall it. I don't, I don't have exact dates when it was. I do remember being on the retreat.
I actually do have, yeah, it was at the retreat in 2019 and it was during the modification of the protocol manual discussion. And it was specific to the commissioner positions because we, we had a lengthy discussion about some of the conflicts that the commissioner positions were feeling and we modified what their actual role was. And it was during that discussion. I think everybody that was a commissioner at the time that had a role to play just stayed in those positions. There wasn't really a lot of discussion about, okay, do we need to like reassign those seats? So it was kind of like an unspoken thing to some extent.
I am, I am in agreement that I would, I would like to see some, like, so there isn't any confusion in the future, some detailed outline as to when and who and how. It definitely needs to be a little clearer.
I think now that this is on everybody's radar, that's something that, even though the executive session is more so discussing the, the substance of the actual evaluation, I think in the next meeting, we can kind of put our heads together and at least get kind of an outline of what our policy is gonna be moving forward. Della, if, if you want to carry this through the next meeting, that's fine. If not, I'm willing to do it. And then I would say, at the meeting, at the end of the month, we'll go ahead and nominate who's gonna carry this through to January 1st and go from there.
I'm fine with finishing it and I'll be happy to write up the steps for doing it and bring those in.
Okay. I have Angie's evaluation that she got to me today. I will get that to you, though.
All right, thank you.
And just a point of clarification, Mayor, the evaluation would be done in, in just an open session like this?
Oh, correct. It's your choice.
Yeah, and I just think from a transparency, you know, we're all about trying to make sure that we're very transparent. And I, if there was, you know, the nature of a complaint against me or something like that by an individual, I'd want to hear what that is in executive session, just because you just don't know what's gonna come out of somebody's, you know, mouth or, or what might be written in a letter. But just, just from a understanding of a complaint. But otherwise, as far as evaluating me or just general critiques or comments of things that are going on, I prefer those to be in open session.
Yep, that's, that's your decision. I'm totally fine with that as well. So is everybody in, in agreement on how this is gonna go next month and moving forward? I'll take that.
So with, with Della, would you be prepared to do that at the July 27th meeting for agenda?
Yes, I would.
Yeah, that was, I believe that was the original discussion, was to do it on the 27th, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so we're, we're staying on track. Again, Ron, for me and I believe the rest of the council, that's our bad on not getting you your evaluation sooner. We owe that to you. And that, that's a mistake on our part for letting it fall through the cracks. But hopefully, getting some, some actual written policy in place will keep that from happening in the future.
We, we are actually in the process. As a matter of fact, we're about 99%. We're just doing final edits on an update to the protocol manual. We, we staff had went through that during this COVID period, reorganized it so that it flowed better and added some pictorials and flow charts and things like that. We can do a quick amendment and just say the evaluation would be done, the first meeting in January, council will appoint somebody to conduct the city administrator evaluation. We can just write it right in there if you'd like.
Yeah. And yeah, we can even just do, you know, an addendum or whatever, who wanted to write out actual written policy guidance or whatever. That, that, yeah, we can figure out a way to make that happen pretty easily. All right, so if that's the end of that discussion, city administrator report. It's all you, Ron.
Yeah, now the lengthy part of the meeting.
I don't think it's gonna be the lengthy part.
Okay, well, it'll be my lengthy discussion. Just an update to the COVID-19, which I told council we'll discuss it every meeting until COVID-19 is no longer an issue. We are up to 26 cases. We had our largest increase yesterday. I believe we had six cases posted yesterday. So since we've met the last time, we've had seven new cases. Right now, City Hall is still closed, but our glass partition is scheduled to be installed on Wednesday. It was quite a lengthy process because, as you can imagine, all of these contractors and subcontractors that do this work have been diligently busy and behind. But that, that will be done on Wednesday. We are also adding what's called an eye wave filtration system into the City Hall building itself. And this system is, is supposed to help reduce or eliminate the particles, pathogens that are getting sucked into the filtration system and then maybe being spread around the building. So we'll have those two things hopefully tied up by the end of the week. What I wanted to talk to council about was the possibility of going ahead and opening to the public next week. Now, just so council knows, we've still conducted all the services that we normally would, would conduct. The only thing that people haven't been able to do is come into the counter and pay their utility payments. But if somebody had made an appointment or they had a new application or different things like that, staff would go outside, meet them, get their stuff. We've been doing that. But just wanting to know is if you guys think it's too soon? I think we have all the protections that we could probably put in place in this week. So I'm fine with opening the, opening the lobby next week. Thoughts on that?
I'm fine with it. We're, we're taking all the precautions we can.
Will we still be doing the split shift so that there's not exposure to everyone?
No, our, you know, we actually stopped that this week and part of the reason is our, our system of checks and balances hasn't worked as well remotely as what it does in person. And then our, our number of folks are so minimum, if we're gonna open up to the public, which was our plan, you just can't do it on a split shift. It's just, it's just too difficult. I mean, we'd literally be having to open the lobby and lock the lobby and open the lobby and lock the lobby throughout the day if we tried to do that.
But you're distancing in the office as well.
We're just, we're distancing in the office. What we've done is we've moved a staff member into the mayor's office. And then everybody else except for one staff member is in an office. That staff member is in a Plexiglas cubicle. And anytime somebody moves around City Hall, we have to put on a mask. So if you go to the bathroom, if you go to the break room, if you go to the copy machine, you have to put on a mask to leave your office. I feel like we're taking about as many safeguards in place as what we could do. It's not 100% foolproof. You know, if we, if we happen to have an infection, just one, in the office, we most likely would have to shut down again because we quarantine everybody.
So, so Ron, if I may, I mean, I trust your wisdom and guidance on this and I, and I have no doubts that you're going to do everything you can to, to take care of staff and the public. If you had asked me this question, if you had asked, you know, me this question, you know, I don't know, hours ago this morning, I probably would have been, yeah, sure, sounds good. But with the governor's, you know, press. But with the governor's, you know, press conference that just happened a few hours ago and some of the additional guidelines and restrictions and just all of that, there's a part of me that says, you know, I keep, and the fact that I sit with our housing's emergency management team and been listening on some of those conversations, there's a part of me that says, you know, I almost want to wait a little bit longer just to see what the next thing that's going to come before we say that. Or, or at least have something out there that, that says to the public, yeah, we're going to open for additional business, but please understand as quickly as we open, we may have to quickly back shut back down. So people are not, you know, they're going to be irritated as it is and I get that, I'm totally tracking on that, but it might lessen a little bit of that. So, so that's just my two cents on it. You know, unfortunately, we had that press conference that happened just a few hours ago that just adds a lot more to the mix.
Yeah, so are you concerned about the staff not staying in two teams? Are you concerned about just infection rates?
I'm, I'm concerned about infection rates. I'm, I'm concerned about the inconsistency for the public and staff. If we have to open then close back down, it's the same concerns I've had about some of the things that we've talked about when it comes to opening and closing. I know we're going to talk about the splash park a little bit later, but honestly, it's the same concern I'll have when we talk about the splash park. You know, why open something that really looks like it's probably going to go that direction of possibly closing down? You know, so I, that's just my concern is, is, is.
Yeah. Well, so, so there's a couple of things. We could open to the public. I would say that a lot of people are going to continue with their current process. They're going to put their payments in the Dropbox. So I think the traffic is going to be less. We have a, a protocol in place where we're only going to let one person in the lobby at a time. So we'll put a note on the door that says, you know, if anybody's in the lobby, please wait one person at a time. They'll have to wear a mask or they won't be served. What basically what we would do is if they claim a medical condition that doesn't allow them to wear a mask, then we would, we would have them go outside and we would come out to them. So that would be, we do have masks that we would provide if somebody doesn't have masks that we were able to get from, some from the National Guard that are disposable masks. If you're, I mean, if there's a heightened listen, I don't know that there's a right or wrong answer, you know, there's always great answers until something goes wrong. And that's why I'm having this discussion with you because really I don't want the weight of, of all of these things necessarily that just fall on me and then have something, you know, somebody come in and get infected. I'm happy to keep us into two teams. If you're concerned about continuity of operations, it's just servicing folks at the counter, depending on the volume, we may have to limit that if we go to two teams. We can do that. We've, we've only worked together today as a group. And, and so that's really up to you. I've been limiting my time in the office because usually I come in, I'm fair, I'm fairly isolated from everybody else when I come to the office. And then I'm working more remotely than everybody else just because the nature of my work, I can be more of that. The only reason why I even thought about bringing our team together is we have to do it at some point. Who knows how long this is going to last? And we are, you know, we just aren't, we just don't have as much of the checks and balances. So we're making a few more errors as an example, the CDBG contract getting missed from the agenda when you're, you know, when you're splintered in six different locations, you just don't have that checks and balances and system of operation. And I don't mind doing it, council just needs to know that, you know, a few of these errors do occur.
Can I say something? So my opinion is, is that I think our society as a whole is never going to be the same. It's never. So unfortunately, this is going to be the new normal. We're going to look back years from now and we're going to remember, remember the COVID outbreak and how it changed the world. And this is one of those events. And I, I'm a firm believer that we need to, we need to adapt and we need to learn and we need to try to live life as normally as we can with these new health concerns in place. The press conference today, it's worrisome, but at the same time, I agree that like, we can't control other people's actions, but we can control ourselves. The state hospital is running with thousands of employees and very minimal infections and no infections to, the last time I checked, no infections to the patients. I don't see why that couldn't be taken care of in our, in our city. I'm not saying that it's not going to happen, but when precautions are taken and they're done correctly, people can be safe. So like eventually, you know, we can keep ourselves in this little bubble, but I don't think we're doing, I don't think we're doing our staff a favor. I don't think we're doing the town a favor. If we have those safety precautions in place and we're washing hands and we're checking temperatures and we have these guidelines and the email that you had sent out and you talked about, you know, the distancing and the masks and all the precautions that we're taking, I feel that those are adequate. And eventually we need to learn to live within this new norm. So I think we should open up with those precautions in place.
And I'm good with opening up, actually the protocols you talked about, Ron, are more than what the state's doing. For example, DMV, if they have a customer, they recommend masks, but if a customer comes in without one, they still get served. They can offer them a mask, but if they refuse to put it on, they still get served. So, you know, what you proposed is actually more stringent than what the state's following. I'm in favor of opening up.
And I, I do think we have to look at like the recent press conference and, and some of the other statistics that are coming out with, within a certain context, you know, it's like a Florida, 15,300 new cases the other day. Whereas, you know, our, our high point has hovered around 300, you know, as, as a percentage of our population, as a percentage of the tests that we've done, that's still very low. Yes, it is a concern, but Oregon as a whole actually has done much, much, much better than a vast majority of other states. So when we, when we take that in context, you know, in general, we are already by virtue of being in Oregon, a lower risk population. And we are taking steps that are well beyond the guidelines that are being put out by the state and meet or exceed the guidelines that are being put out by the CDC and the federal government as well. So I, I think we're doing more than what can be expected of us and I'm, I'm totally fine with us reopening.
And, and again, I'll just restate again, Ron, I do trust your wisdom on this and, and I know that you've done a really good job of putting a plan and communicating with us. I think the one thing that, that will help with a lot of this in the communication is just reminding folks that as we do these things, that we are also governed by other forces that may require us to maybe back step, you know, kind of do two steps forward, one step back concept. So I just think that that will help us with the public if that time comes. And, and I, I hate to be the naysayer, but I think I truly believe what's happening, that that time is going to come. I want to be wrong though, I want to be very clear on that. But I, I don't know, there's just a lot of things that are going on that make me think, yeah, we're, we're going to be going back to the way of California not before too long. So.
I think personally I have faith in our citizens. I attended the Saturday market this last weekend and I was really happy the fact that people took the time to be distant and respectful and even the people that maybe weren't fans of wearing the mask, you know, they might have complained a little bit, might have grumbled, but they took the time to actually put it on. And, you know, I think our citizens aren't stupid, you know, they are, are, you know, more than capable of, I think, doing the right thing. And I have a lot of faith in Ron, especially with just his here, you know, preparation of us in the city in this situation, you know. And, you know, he's the one that runs the day-to-day operations. So if he feels comfortable that we're in a place to do it, I fully support him. And I think, you know, as long as we're communicative with the public and say, you know, we're opening back up, we're taking these precautions and, you know, I think it'll, you know, push people to feel comfortable in the fact that, you know, business is going, we are open, we're ready to roll. And I think it says a huge testament about the leadership that we have right now in place as far as, you know, Ron and, you know, the work all our employees are doing. So I fully support reopening and I think as long as we're, you know, continuing the cautious path that we're on, I think we'll be fine. And I think as long as we communicate with people, I think we'll be okay.
I do think that we need to make a strong effort of communication that if we open and people, there are those people that don't want to wear masks and they're just refusing. There are people like me that have asthma and, you know, we have to make adjustments in our lives, but like we need to really communicate that if someone's going to refuse to wear a mask, then they need to wait at the outside and we'll come to them.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll service them and we'll just do it through an alternative process. So.
I had to explain to some community members the other day, you know, as, as far as the concerns about, oh, you know, it's violating ADA. No, it's not. ADA requires we make reasonable accommodation. Having them wait outside is a reasonable accommodation.
Yeah, so, so I'm going to go ahead and move forward with that plan. I'll put out an email to you guys before I do any social media posts about the actual opening day, somewhere between Monday and midweek is my, is my guess at this point. But we're going to shoot, we're going to shoot to get open and we'll take as many precautions as we can. You know, the difficulty is, is I think some staff get complacent, especially those that are accustomed to high-risk activity where, you know, I'm a big hobophobe because, or germaphobe because I, I have a few of those high-risk conditions. And, and, and so I think, I think we'll take extra precautions and keep people separated, but, but it'll all work out.
I have a few of my rich conditions and two daughters, so.
Yeah.
All the time.
Yeah. Yeah, my staff already knows that I'm, I'm a, I'm a worrier about this stuff. Governor did add to her executive order, limiting social indoor events to 10 people today and requiring wearing of masks outdoors in distances of less than six feet apart or being around others that are not part of your immediate family. I, I do that anyway. I, I see a lot of people doing that. I don't know that that's a, a big change, but things like Saturday, Saturday market, we'll just have to make sure folks are wearing masks. And we do have a supply of masks that were given to us that are the KN95s. And they're, they're a really good filtration mask, but they're not recommended at the N95 level because they're not actually certified through CDC. But they certainly provide, I think, much more protection than like cloth mask would. And we'll make those available while supplies last to the Saturday market group to hand out, you know, maybe at the elected's tent or, or at the lobby at City Hall. So we'll, we'll have a supply of those for a while. Okay, then one other thing from, from just an operational standpoint, speaking with a number of my colleagues, some cities have adopted a policy that if a staff member does any interstate travel or large gathered events, they're required to wait a 14-day period before returning back to work. There's a number of cities that have that policy. I have not implemented that policy, not that I don't think it's a bad policy. It's just back to the risk versus reward and our staff is so limited, it would be, it would be really, really difficult for me to invoke that and then continue to staff operations of the city. So I just wanted, I just wanted you folks to know, you know, we're not, we're not doing that level of precautions having to do with staffing because we're implementing what's reasonable. And that would be, that would be unreasonable. I'd have three or four, maybe five staff members that would have to go into a 14-day quarantine period and, and that's a third of our, our staff across multiple departments. So, you know, there's a little bit of risk there. What I have done is the certified N95 masks, they're not really reusable, they're really meant to be kind of a day use and then tossed away. I have given those to staff, I've authorized them to take extra home to their spouses of those. These were paid for through a grant. And I just feel like if they're going to be out in a social environment, I'd rather they be protected and a $3 mask is a pretty small price to pay considering the circumstances. So I'm allowing them to take those for, for, you know, other uses outside of actually being at the city. And that's kind of how I'm addressing that. If their spouse gets into a situation where, you know, they are, get near an infected person and they're not protected and that comes into us, it really doesn't do us any good, no matter what the precautions are that we've taken. So those are the policies having to do with COVID right now. And so hopefully that all sounds good to you or if you have any comments, you can get with me on it. All right, Wildwood Park, that's the next thing on my agenda. I sent, I believe I sent you guys a spreadsheet. It was a task to do from the last council meeting on what other cities were doing with spray parks. It seems like everybody's keeping them closed at this point. I guess the question remains, if we do continue to close the spray park, do we open the playground equipment and/or the restrooms? And that was really the, the discussion that we talked about having at this meeting.
Yeah, I've, I've had a number of people ask me about the park itself, including at the, the Saturday market. And I, I know at least from a lot of the people that live in that area, they're saying, well, yeah, it makes sense to keep the, you know, the, the water features off, but why is the rest of the playground closed when all the other playgrounds in, in the city are open? And so I, I assured all of them, hey, we're going to be talking about it the next meeting. I'm, I'm really of the opinion that yes, we should keep the, the splash pad itself shut down, but open up the rest of the park. The rest of the parks are open, you know, some people have limited mobility, some people, that's really the only park that they're easily able to access. Open up the rest of the park.
I will say that there's quite a few people using it regardless of whether it's open or not anyway, so we might as well open it, which what I encouraged last time was to open the park, not the splash pad.
And, and let me just say, when I talk about keeping it closed, I'm specifically talking about the splash pad as well. I, I mean, I do think, I mean, the mayor's right, the rest of the other parks are open. It makes sense to let this one be open. I mean, we have signage that talks about, you know, social distancing and everything. So, I mean, again, it's, it's, but that's the effective communication of we're going to do these things, but understand there are other entities that may come to us and say, now you have to do something different based upon Spike. So I just, I think we need to be very crystal clear though, on why we don't open the splash park of it. And it sounds like from what Mayor's, you know, said, that he's talked to folks who are like, we get that, we understand that, let us have the rest of it, so.
Yeah, I think, you know, I'm fine with putting that on the signage or whatever, but I mean, every, everyone that I've, I've spoken with has, well, yeah, it's a no-brainer that the splash pad is still closed, but the rest of it, you know.
Yeah.
I'm going over the spreadsheet Ron sent and I did get a couple messages sent myself asking, when are we going to get this splash pad open? The kids are going crazy, they want to get wet. So like just for transparency purposes and like I, in the spreadsheet that Ron sent us, this is for public information, Salem, both Salem and Kaiser are, their splash pads are closed for the season, Oregon City, Portland, Maloa, Albany, Wilsonville, Gladstone, Westland, those, I mean, the majority of cities around Oregon, the surrounding areas, their splash pads are closed for obvious reasons. So I just, I just want the public to know that Ron did this research and the reasons we need to close them. I am for opening up the park, we're using it anyways, like everyone, I think we might have a consensus across. think we might have a consensus across the council. Open up the bathroom, obviously. If we're going to have the park open, kids need to use the bathroom. That's just, that's just a no brainer. And again, use at your own risk.
Bathroom, they're going to pee on something.
Yes. Ron, thank you for sending that out. I appreciate that.
I've, I've got kind of just a random thought and this just really occurred to me. I mean, I'm, I'm of the opinion that maybe we should just go ahead and say, hey, listen, it's closed for the season. Like realistically, the chances of us getting it open safely at any point are pretty minimal. I'm fine with us just saying like, hey, listen everybody, yes, we apologize. It's closed for the season. With that being said, we're, we're sort of making a bit of a savings on the water there, correct? Because we're not using it. Would it be outlandish for us to do a quick workup of about how much that has saved and maybe funneling it into one of the other summer programs or any of the like movies in the park or anything like that? So that we can tell the community like, hey, yes, it sucks that this is closed, but what we did do to try and make up for that is, you know, we, we added to these events or we did this with that amount of money that was saved, just so that we're showing the community that like, we're still trying to do something.
Yeah. Well, we couldn't actually do that, Mayor, because that's, well, let me think a second.
Wouldn't it just take a motion by us to transfer money from one account to another?
Well, we don't.
Or one line add up to another?
No, we don't pay for our own water. And so basically we would have to take money from the utility. So, and we don't pay for it anyway. So we're not really saving any money because we don't charge ourselves for our own water usage. And then it would be, right now it's part of the utility. So we couldn't cross transfer that. The other thing is, is we have plenty of money in those funds. The summer program isn't seeing the attendance that we typically, and it's funded. And it's really getting, I think, a lower attendance. I haven't gotten a report back on movies in the park yet, but most of, both of those programs now have turned over to a full volunteer and they really, outside of books that we're buying and a few supplies for events and crafts, don't take a lot of money to implement. And we're doing the free corn. I mean, if there, we have money in our events fund. If there's something that we want to spend money for that's kind of event related, we probably have some money that we could spend some money for. So rather than crossing those two, if, if somebody had ideas, we could certainly look at it. I think the difficulty is it's difficult to spend money because there's really not a lot we can do. And when you look at even the new guidance that's out, that, that even makes it even more difficult, I think.
I can speak to the parks program. We have 16 children registered. Not all of them attend every week, but they're loving it and enjoying the time. And the movie night has some families coming out, but people are very cautious and a lot of them are saying, we'll see in a few weeks how it's going and maybe come. So.
And, and that's what I've been experiencing. I think it's, you know, a lot of people are extremely cautious. And I spoke to a local resident who, actually Mike Klein, he did a survey of his, his congregation. I, I don't want to divulge the results of that survey because I'm not sure how he disseminated that, but there's a percentage of people that are just not really concerned about it for a variety of reasons. And so they're kind of doing business as usual, as much as they can. And then there's a percentage of people that are just like, I'm not doing anything until this thing's figured out. And then there's a percentage of people that are kind of in the middle, which is I think where most of us are, which is we're cautious. We're not going to go take unnecessary risk, but we'll still go out and do what's needed to be done. And I, I think that's the way we're seeing that in our, across our events and our population too. So.
That, that brings up a second thing with the park stuff that I want to chat about real quick. But first, are we all kind of on the same page with Wildwood Park? Open the park, keep the splash pad closed. Are we, are we all cool with that?
And when you say keep it closed, keep it closed for the season, just go ahead and close that door. Keep it closed for the season.
That's what I would think. Yeah.
Yeah. I, I don't feel comfortable opening the splash pad up this year. There's other ways. And I know, like, you know, it's not very fun and the splash pads are fun, but you know, we're just going to have to put sprinklers in the backyard and.
And if something changes tomorrow and we can open it, cool. Set low expectations and nobody's disappointed.
That's my motto in life.
So the only thing that I would make a comment there is that is one of our smaller parks. So we are going to have to at least somewhat keep an eye on it for capacity. Without the splash park open, maybe the capacity won't be an issue. But, you know, if we went there and there were large groups of people there, we'd, we'd have to, have to move some people out. But otherwise I think we can accomplish getting it up, up online.
Are you saying, Ron, that we'll have to institute the party police? Sorry, couldn't resist. Executive said.
I don't think we're going to be the party police, but, but we will, we will lightly ask people to leave if we think that there, there's too many people. And we, we would do that in our own park. We, right now, the, the guidelines for outdoor event are 100 people. And, and when we rent that out or people come in inquiring about it, we let them know that if you, you know, if you go over 100 people and, and, and we happen to come by there, your, your rental is void and you're, you're probably going to get exited.
That's, I think that's totally reasonable. I, I went out to eat this weekend and too many people were getting in line to wait. And the owner asked everyone, they, you know, they said, hey, we have too many people in here. You guys need to go outside. And that's just, like I said, that's our new normal. That's just something that we have to learn to live with.
The, the other thing I just wanted to touch on real quick, since, you know, Gus and I had a conversation about it, he brought it up. I want to make sure it doesn't slip through the cracks. One of the ideas that was floated was one of the movies in the night, or movies in the, in the park nights, looking at potentially using Mill Creek Park, kind of like a drive-in, right? It, it really wouldn't do too much damage to have a handful of cars drive out there. We can still socially distance pretty easily. When I floated that idea to the community, a bunch of people thought it was the, the greatest thing since sliced bread. Do we think that that's something that's still even a possibility, Ron? Or should I turn around and shut that idea back down?
Well, we actually looked at that early on in this event for just movies in the park on Saturdays. The, the difficulty there, and I've done a little bit more research in this, you know, it could just be that I don't have the connections to the supply. But the difficulty there is the cost of the equipment is, is so much that it's cost prohibitive.
Oh, oh, we, no. I, I, we, we can fix that pretty easily, Ron. The, the, that, the, the equipment, based on what we already have, we can, we can make that happen really easily. We need, we need a, a couple of adapters. I think we can make this happen for less than $1,500. I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm kind of a, a video file. The equipment that we have already, the, the speakers and everything that we have, even when we just do like Christmas in the park, that's, that's a super easy fix. The, the, the highest cost item would be if we purchased a projector that can handle something like that, which would be extremely expensive. But even renting them for an evening is not terribly expensive. We're going to have, we're going to have a cost associated if we have, you know, city staff there. But the, the cost as far as, as equipment, I can, I can turn you on to a couple of good places where we can, we can get stuff from that are.
Yeah. Send, send me some of that information and then we could talk more about it. Maybe we can bring you into one of our event meetings and we can discuss it.
I don't have anything else going on right now.
All right. I just have two more quick items. One is Marion County will be repaving Mill Creek from Amesville to Turner. This project is supposed to start on July 23rd. We haven't gotten a full schedule from Marion County. We're waiting on that, but as soon as we get that, we'll blast that out to everyone. So just to let you all know that that's going to be happening. And my guess is there will be some delays in driving back and forth through there. And then finally, the last item, and this is a decision item that we kind of need from council, but again, it's just a yes or no vote, is at 11th and Mill Creek, we have the flashing yellow light that's there. Marion County has suggested that we remove that light. And we just left it there because, you know, council asked it to be installed years ago and it wasn't really worth messing with. But now Pacific Power has got to make some changes to the poles that hold those lights and they're going to be relocating them. And along with our agreement to put that light in, we agreed to pay for its relocation cost years ago if it needed to be moved. And so that's somewhere between $10,000 and $20,000. And we pay $75 a month for the power connection. Public Works staff has suggested that it really doesn't serve any public safety, traffic control purpose. They've suggested that we just go ahead and have it removed when they do that project. We need to get council's direction and/or approval if that's the direction that you are fine with us going.
I've always kind of wondered why that was there. I guess now I know.
I kind of like a little blinking light. I'm really proud that we don't have a stoplight. We don't, it's a yellow blinking light, not even a red one.
I mean, if, if you recommended we put in an actual traffic light, I was going to tell you, slow down, we're growing way too fast. We can't have an actual traffic light yet.
It was not serving a safety purpose and it's going to cost us money and I think we should probably get rid of it.
It was originally put in at the request of some families because of an accident, but there's been no accidents there for so long. I don't see that it really serves the purpose.
So that would just become a three-way stop, correct?
No, it's, it's, it's just a, it's just a one stop off of 11th and it would just be, it would always be that.
Just the one. You're right. Yeah.
Yeah. And, and the yellow light honestly just serves the purpose of, just letting people know there's an intersection there, but it's not really an intersection. It's really just a, a road that comes out there. So.
Not even a red light, not a red blinking light, it's a yellow.
I'm, I'm fine with just getting rid of it, Ron. There's, there's no point.
So can we get a council vote on that? It's not, it's a informal thing, but just so that I've got you guys saying, go ahead and get rid of it.
Well, I mean, we can just make it official. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to remove the yellow blinking light at, what is that, on 11th Street?
11th and Mill Creek.
On 11th and Mill Creek.
Cool. You, you guys can fight over who was second.
Okay. Counselor Bedwell.
Yes.
Counselor Casares. You're muted.
Do a thumbs up, thumbs up.
Counselor Seaho.
Yes.
Counselor Purdy.
Aye.
Counselor Sini.
Aye.
Mayor Clevenger.
Aye.
Okay. Unanimous.
I'm done. Unless you have questions for me.
I got nothing. Anybody have anything for Ron?
I guess I can just point you that there are some supporting documents in your packet from Public Works. They've been working on council chambers, getting it prepared for if and when we get back in there. So there's a new big screen installed and they've been doing some tweaks to the audio. I think it sounds a lot better. And we're also working on getting a system in place where we could, we could do live stream and we can also do video meetings in there, both in physical and other people if they wanted to be part of that. So again, it's kind of the new norm. We're figuring it out. And then Police Department report, I don't think there's any surprises in there. They did do some pretty good lost property recoveries this month. And then just the review of our, our, our check registries in there for your review.
Ron, were you going to update council on the police recognition we discussed last council meeting?
Oh, thank you. Again, that slipped my mind. So as council directed us through this discussion, we were going to work with council member Purdy and the chief to, to, to do, just to let the officers know that they were supported by their elected officials, but not do a big public kind of brouhaha about it. And the chief recommended that he has a new team. We just had some pictures done for the city website of their, their current team. And his idea was that we just have a picture printed to hang on the wall in the bullpen area that just showed the new team. And then we could inscribe a little plaque at the bottom with just a sentence that says, thank you for all you do. You're supported. Type thing. And that's what the chief thought. He pulled the officers. They thought that would be meaningful to them. And, and so that's kind of what we landed on. With your approval, we could get that executed pretty quickly.
Yeah, I, I wasn't really part of the initial discussion, but I mean, that, that seems fine to me. Obviously, anything involving law enforcement is a slightly slippery slope these days. But I think that that's small, but to the point.
I support that idea. I like that idea. I also, I appreciated the fact that we had a little bit of conversation around, you know, our own police force looking at the makeup of that police force. And I think that there'll be some additional time to have some more conversation about that. I do think we want to be mindful of the makeup of our police force going forward when we're doing some of these things and, and just how that can be viewed by other people that are not part of our community. And then what are the things that we can do to make sure that there's a diversity, equity, inclusion lens in the hiring of staff across the city in general?
And, and that was actually a conversation, if, if you recall, Ron, that we had very early on, right after I got elected about, you know, are, are we, you know, within the, the hiring process, are we within our legal rights to give some preference to an officer who is fluent in Spanish, since we have a number of Hispanic families in the community that are predominantly Spanish speaking or English as a second language? You know, so we, we had that discussion. This, this is something that we, we have had on the radar for a while, but I think given everything that is happening socially these days, it would be a good idea to kind of double down on that.
Yeah. The difficulty, especially with police officers, is there's a very specific, most people don't understand this, but there's a very specific hiring structure that has to occur. First, they have to pass a test. And, and then they're ranked based on their score of that test as part of the way civil services are structured. And so it's not a matter of inclusion or exclusion. Typically, a scores dictate who, who, who you can hire.
Isn't that for new hires? I mean, laterals.
Say something.
Laterals and laterals, you're, you're, you know, if you, you don't often get a lot of laterals that want to come to a small community unless there's some other problematic issue.
Yeah.
Like they've been, you know, maybe they've had problems with another department. We have, we can put as part of our hiring process, if we want somebody bilingual. We did have a bilingual reserve officer for a while, but reserve officers kind of come and go. And, and, and so we lost that one. But we can put that in there as, as it weights the score, but it can't be the deciding factor in any of our position. Otherwise.
I know there, and, and specifically for how Amesville PD works, I couldn't say, but I know even some of the counties do offer. but I know even some of the counties do offer incentive pay for doc, for, for officers that are bilingual. And so
You can do that.
If we're allowed to do that, so, I, I think, you know, we don't, we don't need to hold up any of our hiring processes, but I do think that
Yeah.
it, it would be wise for us to make a concerted effort to address that if possible.
We can, we can do it.
I'm over here waiting. Okay, guys, hold on. So before, before I'm like, I'm like, pick me, pick me, pick me, okay. So, um, so like, I, I've been through the hiring process before, like, mind you, it was like 100 years ago when I was in my twenties, so some things may have changed. Like, there's no reason
You're not in your twenties, Angie?
Shut up. I, uh, stop it. So I applied for positions where it said, you know, bilingual officer, or, you know, bilingual preferred. There's no reason why we, we couldn't do that in the next, and especially within our reserve officers, we could, we can put on our applications, you know, bilingual preferred. There's no reason I applied at a lot of those positions. So it just means
We currently have six reserve, I think six reserve officer positions open. Nobody, we, I think we would, we would love to have somebody bilingual for those.
So if nobody's applying, then my question is, why not?
Well.
I mean, why, why are we not, no, what I'm saying is like, let, let's, let's look at that program. So when I was applying in reserve officers, like, like, I was ambitious, and I was like, I'm going to apply everywhere I can, and, and, and the applicants, there was numerous. So why, why aren't we? What, what do we need to look at within ourselves to figure out why isn't our reserve program highly sought after as other reserve programs?
Well, I think they're all, I think, yeah, I think a lot of them are in the same position, and you have to put it in the context of time. So we had a fairly robust reserve program until the economy was doing so well the last couple of years, and everybody was at full employment. When people weren't employed and they could be part of the reserve program and work their way into a career, that, that's the reason why a lot of people do the reserve program. Some people do it just as a way to give back to the community, and they have other careers, and they do that as that program. But by and large, a lot of the people that are interested in the reserve would like to go into law enforcement.
Yeah.
And we had these low unemployment rate, as low as it was, people just couldn't do it because they were all working, and a lot of people were working and having to prioritize those careers. And then now, it's just the environment. You know, I don't, not, a lot of people are rushing to jump into any of the law enforcement programs. That'll change over time, and we'll get those programs back up and running. I don't think it's anything to do with the program, I think it's just, the last few years, we've seen this cycle that is, hasn't been conducive to the program. And as far as having bilingual folks, we hire the most qualified people, we can put in the applicant, application that we're giving preference, or we're seeking somebody with, in, in like a regular position, that we would like to have somebody that's bilingual. And, and I'll be honest with you, there are certainly times where that would be beneficial to us as a city, so we can weight it in that context. But we also want to make sure that we're getting good, sound employees, so we want to weight it. We don't want to just say, we're only hiring a
The only concern is that, so, you know, if you pull up our census from 2000, and, and I, and I've brought this before, you know, in, in 2000 and, what, 2010, we have like a 22% population of Hispanic population. And then it's only, and it had gone up like 10% from the year 2000. So if it goes up another 10%, we're looking at almost, you know, a 30% Hispanic population in our town, our town of 4,04200 people, that's a significant number of people.
Yeah, that, that number's high, Angie, it's not, it's not that high.
Well, I'm guessing, so I'm not saying.
But still, with the number of officers we have.
Not that we don't have a good percentage of our population, so it's, it's certainly something we can look at. And we did, we did look at it as, with our last couple of higher positions, having somebody that was bilingual, but we just didn't have somebody that met the criteria that applied.
Well, and I, I, I think we are getting a little off topic.
Yeah.
Discuss the, the law enforcement appreciation. We do understand that this is something that we want to consider, and something that is, is important to us, that we look at bilingual officers. Do, do we need to have any further discussion?
Nope, when a position comes open, we can talk about it a little bit more. So that actually leads me into one other thing that was brought up at the last meeting, and that was, we had a resident that participated, I believe Rachel, I want to say Rachel, forgive me if I'm not, if I'm not remembering the name right, but it's been a whirlwind of the last couple of weeks, but had suggested doing some community posters that the community could come forward and do artwork on, and, and write messages of hope and thanks and things of that nature to either the community or the city staff. And that was a great idea, and we actually put together those posters on some vinyl, and will, that's, it was something, we actually fit right into what we were talking about, which was really promoting this Almsville Together campaign, and really just bringing the community together to get through this COVID-19 episode, and we just haven't fully implemented that yet, but this fits right in with that. And so that's something that we, our plan is to, to set those out during the day in the city hall complex, and people can come by and write their messages, and then we'll put them away and bring them back out so they don't get taken or vandalized, so.
You know, and, and this is, this is pushing that idea a little bit further down the road, but what about making that something that is part of the Corn Festival? Since we already have a map with like garage salespeople can stop at, maybe make that a, a spot on the map at City Hall, and people can some by, come by and sign us.
I like the idea. Good idea. All right, that's, that's it.
All right. I have nothing to report, does anybody have anything to report? All right, anything for the good of the order? I've got nothing. So correspondence.
Can I back up to good of the order? So does council want to have a discussion on next steps for your appointee? In good of the order, it's a council initiative, so it's a council-driven?
You know, and, and honestly, I, I'm glad you brought that up, I should probably backpedal a little bit, because I had emailed back and forth with Colleen, and I think we need to maybe clarify amongst ourselves what we're going to do. My thought process was, yes, we were all getting the applications today, that gives us two weeks to kind of discuss them, make phone calls, whatever else, and then we're going to do the appointment on, on the 27th. Was that everybody else's understanding? Because I just, I want to make sure we're all on the same page.
That's what I understood.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think the one thing that got lost is where we, I thought at one point we were going to allow the applicants to present to the council in a, in a Zoom meeting, in a council meeting, such as what was done a few years ago when several of us were appointed as well, so.
Yeah, we could, and, we could invite them if you'd like to the, to the appointee meeting, which would be the next meeting, we can invite them and just ask them to say a few things about themselves.
Yeah, I, kind of on that idea, I was thinking like, like what you and Larry and Jim had done, we bring them a part of, into the meeting, we give them, you know, a, a couple minutes, and then maybe each counselor gets one question they want to ask, you know, we, we're going to have two weeks to, to talk to each of these applicants if we want, so maybe as part of the meeting, each counselor gets one question to ask, and then we move on to the next applicant, and then from there, we do the appointment.
Works for me.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah. Is that, is that good? Is that, is that what you were looking for, Ron?
I just need to know what you want us to do.
Yeah, so I would say the, the three applicants that we have, either yourself or, or Colleen, reach out to them, ask them to be a part of the meeting if they are present at the meeting, which obviously they should be. We will give them, you know, three to five minutes to just kind of give us their, their sales pitch, and then each counselor will have the opportunity to ask one question if they so choose, and after that, we'll deliberate and make the appointment.
All right, sounds good. Thank you.
So moving on to correspondence, obviously we had quite a bit, let's address the low-hanging fruit first. The council did see, receive a letter stating that Nico does not live in Almsville. That letter was addressed to us anonymously as a council. I can say unequivocally, that's a ridiculous statement. I can, I can get up and take my phone and walk to Nico's house from where I'm at right now. I know exactly where he lives, I've been there before. But obviously, this was a complaint against Nico, so Nico, if you would like to address that, please go right ahead.
Um, I would love to, Mayor, thank you for the opportunity. So I just want to, you know, clarify, you know, I'm 100% supportive, I don't care if you're the President of the United States, if you're a congressman, if you're a counselor, commissioner, doesn't matter. I am very supportive of the First Amendment and people being able to speak out against their elected officials, whether they agree with him or not, so. With that in mind, I kind of wish some, this person would have maybe, I think, addressed my policy, you know, background as well as what I, you know, believe, but that's fine, that's their prerogative, so I just wanted to kind of present a couple of pieces of evidence, I guess, for, for to say that I'm a, a resident here, I've got my, I'm going to cover up my number because just, you know, privacy, but I've gotten to kind of show it to there a little bit. That's my Oregon, St. Oregon issued legal driver's license, you can kind of see the sheen on it, it's for real, and it does say both my PO Box and Caleb Street as my address, because that's where I live, I do live in Caleb Street. I've also got some bills, you know, I've got some correspondence, this one from Marion County that says my address that I do reside. I've got, pull up the Secretary of State's website here, and Bev Clarino there, and I'll show you my voter registration as active. And I'll zoom in there on my, on my address, which lists both my residence and my PO Box, which in case anybody was interested, I mean, I have a PO Box because the time I moved in with my roommate, you know, he was kind of going through divorce, and there was a lot of documentation involved with that, and just for the sake of keeping, you know, my bills separate, keeping my correspondence separate, you know, we came to the agreement, mutual agreement to, you know, have separate mailboxes, so I have a PO Box I share with my brother, actually. So there's that. Give me just a second here while I
So while you're doing what you're doing, Nico, I just want to
I'm going to go ahead and pop outside, if you don't mind, just to show you that I actually live in Almsville.
You guys hear what I said? I said, I've been to Nico's house, I've been with my son, my son and I were over there.
Oh, chill out.
So I'm going to turn my phone around. And what you're seeing is Caleb Street. That's 12th there on the corner. And then if you, if you look, you'll see that, that's, that field that eventually may become some apartments. That's my vehicle, there's one more recognizable ones, because it's, uh, got my brewery stickers on it. If you kind of go down this way, let me turn it around, be heading towards 11th here.
You're like halfway to my house already.
I've got to make sure to do a little flash there, the sign. I apologize if I mean a little too specific, but just during the recall campaign and during 2018 campaign, I invited my political opponents to actually come to my house for a beer or for some lemonade or some tea. Actually invited Della and her husband and Rex, because Rex was saying that I didn't live in Almsville. So that offer still stands. My roommate's actually put a really, really nice patio in the backyard, so, you know, open invitation, if anybody wants to come for a cup of coffee, some beer, lemonade, just some good conversation. So yeah, open invitation to any citizen that wants to come by or political opponent, I'd love to have you. Anybody have any questions at all for me, or any clarifying statements?
I, I think we've put that complaint to rest. Again, you know, this was, this was something that we had actually briefly talked about, because this is a complaint that I've heard two or three times now. And, and quite frankly, the, the fact that this ridiculous anonymous complaint keeps coming in is getting a bit old. Now, I understand that, that everybody has a right to make a complaint, and I agree with Nico, everybody has their First Amendment right, they can, they can contact the city about whatever they want. But Nico lives in Almsville, he does live in Almsville. I'm sorry to whoever has, has, has made this complaint, if it's been the same person a number of times, or whether it's different people, but Nico does live in Almsville, so. Unless anybody has anything else to say, I, I think we've put that one to rest. All right, moving on, so there were a, a number of complaints that were sent to the city regarding one of my Facebook messages. There were also a, a number of statements in support of it, but I do know that, that Counselor Bedwell specifically wanted to address this, so I will give him the time to do that. Go ahead, Gus.
Thank you, Mayor. So Mayor Clevinger, fellow council members, City Administrator Harding, city staff and attendees, I'd like to take a moment to discuss with Mayor Clevinger and the council his behavior on social media and our council meetings. Mayor Clevinger, since the start of your term in 2018, you've used your social media Facebook page, Derek Clevinger, Mayor of Almsville, and your personal Facebook page, I'm Fontana, to communicate with video and written posts with community on a number of city and non-city related matters. Although some of these interactions have been helpful and informative, unfortunately, a majority of the time, you have used them to demean, belittle, name-call, and incite others to bully members of this council and members of the community who disagree with any convention you may have on a particular matter. You have called community members asshole, dumb, tattlers, and other negative terms on a number of occasions. Most recently, you made inappropriate comments about veterans and their struggles with PTSD by saying that they are seeking sympathy when complaining about fireworks, and indicated that these veterans need to stop. I will offer some information to clarify my thoughts. As a veteran and a member of the veteran advocacy community who has worked on a number of veteran issues over the last 20 years, your narrow-minded analysis is 100% incorrect, insensitive, and is a big reason why some veterans do not seek help. Additionally, is not supported by those who work with veterans struggling with PTSD on a daily basis. It should be noted, as you said, that several individuals from the veteran advocacy community, many of whom are combat veterans themselves, took the time to write emails to let you and this council know how wrong, inappropriate, insensitive, and ignorant your statements were. Several indicated as an elected official, you and the city council should be ashamed of your words and conduct, and that you should resign. I'm additionally concerned with how you treat some council members, staff, and public during our regular council meetings. On a number of occasions, you have yelled over, argued, tried to intimidate, and even rolled your eyes and mocked fellow council members, staff, and audience members. Most recently, on May 11, 2020, you got so loud and aggressive with Counselor Purdy, ensuing an argument between the two of you. Additionally, you attempted that same thing with me, and I asked you to please stop yelling at me, to which you replied, you would not stop yelling, that you were just being passionate. Interestingly enough, you took that same passion and directed it towards Counselor Case, the Chief of Police, and finally, City Administrator Harding during that same meeting. You then took that passion one step further just minutes later, to post a video after a meeting calling Counselors Purdy, Seni, and myself liars. Interestingly enough, when it was proven within a week via the video that none of us had lied, that it was actually you who had lied, you recanted your statement about only me and changed your attacks to be more personal in nature. You also made sure You also made sure to let the community know that you were not yelling, but being passionate about how bad we treated everyone with our votes on the marijuana and safety fee issue. Mayor Clevenger, your conduct, both on social media and meetings are a violation of several principles in our code of conduct laid out within the Counselors' Procedures Guide, which I want to remind you and everybody, we all agreed to and signed a written document acknowledging compliance in early 2019. Those principles are as follows. 6.14 Council Discussion. The following general rules governing council discussion and debate. Counselors should avoid personal attacks on other counselors, city staff, in particular the public. The council will treat each other in a courteous, respectful manner. Or 6.17 Council Protocol Ethics. All members of the council shall review and observe the requirements of state law ethics. In addition to complying with state law ethics, all members of council shall refrain from conducting themselves in a manner as to bring discredit upon the government of the city. Hence the statements. 10. Courtesy Norms and Protocols. To be courteous and professional at all times, and this is my favorite one, to praise in public and criticize in private. I also want to remind the council that we as a council unanimously voted to sanction Mayor Clevenger shortly after he took office in 2019 for similar actions. The sanction includes stripping him of this responsibility of speaking on behalf of the council. However, in spite of that, Mayor Clevenger has continued to not only speak to the public about council items, but also talk with the media as the mayor of Almsville. And he's done this with both pages. Now, he will tell you that his Facebook page says anything he says is his opinion and not the council's. It does. I know he will say this because when I've tried to privately ask him to stop his inappropriate behavior and recant a couple of his posts because of how they were viewed, he told me it was his opinion, not the council's, and that I needed to quote, "stop babysitting him." However, as we all know from the numerous statements received from the veterans advocacy community, his most recent comments about veterans are being viewed not only as negative on him, but this council and the city of Almsville. Additionally, it should be noted that the Procedure Guide also states in 10.1 Communications Plan, you are a council member and you cannot shed that title easily. People will assume you're representing the city and the city's position at meetings on social media, the media and just one-on-one in community. On top of the continued blatant and willful violations of our Procedures Guide, Mayor Clevenger's behavior both during council meetings and on social media have created a divisive, unwelcoming, hostile environment in council meetings and our interaction and also amongst the community at large. I personally do not trust you, Mayor Clevenger, at all. Additionally, several people have told me they would complain but are afraid of his and his group's retaliation. Hence anonymous complaints. As a matter of fact, I can almost guarantee you when I get done here, Mayor Clevenger will have a lot to say loudly and belligerently to and about me either during this meeting and or within minutes of this meeting being adjourned on social media. To which people who know nothing about me will call me foul names, question my credentials, service to this country, make foul worded statements about me, threaten to show up at my house and or work to let me know how they think of me or call for me to be recalled. I say this because this has happened to me and other counselors, fellow community members on a number of times in the past after Mayor Clevenger's degrading video and post comments. Is because of all these multiple infractions and openly blatant disregard for not only this council, staff and the good citizens of Almsville, that I'm going to offer Mayor Clevenger the same opportunity he did to Counselor Case recently. Mayor Clevenger, in May, after then Counselor Case made the poor choice, and it was a poor choice, to refer to citizens of Almsville as lazy fat asses and then went to engage inappropriately in arguments on social media, you formally requested his resignation. Okay, since your infractions and prior sanction clearly trump Counselor Case's infractions, I think it is only appropriate to ask you to resign, which I am doing. Therefore, I'm formally requesting a resignation. And depending on your answer, I reserve the right to make one more comment. Mayor Clevenger.
First thing first, uh, no, I'm not resigning. So let's, I I would like to address and I I took some notes. I may miss some of the the points you were making. First, I would like to address the complaints that occurred. And so I have I have written down some notes just to keep myself on track because we all know I can go down rabbit holes from time to time. Regarding the comments, you know, I'm I'm not surprised if there were people who had some complaints. I even said in the video, this is probably going to be the less popular part of my video. However, if if we read the complaints, there's a couple of things that should be noted. There were a total of six complaints that at least I I received that were in the council packet. Five of which were not from members of Almsville. Only one was from a member of Almsville and that was the complaint from uh, Mr. Yarmer. The rest were from people outside of our community. While a number of them uh, say that they are are veterans and I have I have no uh, reason to believe otherwise, according to their statements, um, they are not combat veterans, which is a a different group, in my opinion. I would also like to point out that uh, while Counselor Bedwell is a veteran and I commend him on his services well, to my knowledge, you are not a combat veteran.
That is correct and I've never put myself out as one. You are correct.
I'm not, I'm not saying you did. If we read those those complaints, um, none of them really offered any any issues of substance with what I said. In those complaints, I was referred to as an idiot, uneducated, ignorant, an embarrassment to the veteran community. One statement that I have a, pardon my language, a big fucking mouth, that I couldn't answer the robot trick question required to make a complaint and that I am a pathetic veteran who knows nothing about PTSD. None of those complaints actually addressed anything in substance to what I said. It was personal attacks on me due to a disagreement in my statement. Those complaints also claimed that I said PTSD isn't real, that I referred to veterans as cowards and sissies and that I dismissed those who haven't served as unqualified to comment. None of those are true in either the first video or the second video. So I am left to conclude that many of these comments or many of these complaints were from people who didn't actually watch the video. They were told what I said, which was not accurate. Going a little bit further, the the statement that I am not in a place to speak about PTSD. I want to address that directly. I have 16 years of clinical experience, both in and out of the military. A large chunk of that within the military is with behavioral health. Outside of that, I have degrees in healthcare education as well as healthcare administration. I have firsthand experience with PTSD, uh, going back to my first deployment in 2006. I've been both a contributor and a subject in a number of studies on PTSD. And as a medic, I am generally the first line of care for those individuals who are experiencing behavioral health problems. Before they see the behavioral health officers, they come to me and I actually give them the okay to go see the behavioral health officers because they also have to report to their chain of command. I have also been responsible for helping to craft the 41st Brigade SOP regarding behavioral health and how we will treat soldiers who are having behavioral health issues. On multiple occasions, I have helped soldiers who are experiencing behavioral health issues, many of whom are trying to get out of the VA system, which has a wholly inadequate approach to PTSD and is roughly 10 years behind the sun. With that, a number of the individuals in these complaints claimed that their experience was from employment with the PTSD or with with the the VA and that's how they they got their experience with PTSD. I'm not aware of if any of them are actually working in a medical clinical role. But the PT, the the VA has come under fire for their care towards PTSD for many, many years, to the point that they've literally had individuals light themselves on fire in their parking lot. So the the comment that I am unqualified to speak on PTSD or that an individual working for the VA is somehow more qualified to speak about PTSD than me is quite frankly inadvisable. Many of the statements that were made in those complaints were fictitious or just outright fabrications and and a poor attempt to twist my words. But I want to address the specific statements that I did make that seems to have triggered people. The first statement was that I said PTSD is not a lifelong diagnosis. And the fact of the matter is, is that science does agree with me. Whether whether certain individuals understand that or not, if they were educated on this topic, they would understand that the science does agree with me. For the Brain and Behavior Research Foundation, prolonged PTSD is generally only encountered when the individual isn't receiving treatment, isn't complying with their treatment or isn't adequately being treated. And in many cases, that is because we have veterans who have underlying behavioral health conditions that simply got lumped into PTSD by the VA and so they are not receiving adequate care. This statement that it is not a lifelong condition is also supported by the National Institute of Mental Health and the American Psychological Association. So I'm I'm sorry if some people disagree with that, but that is a factual statement that is backed up by the science. The second statement that I I made that seemed to trigger a lot of individuals was that fireworks don't sound like combat. Now, that has been twisted into me saying that fireworks are not a trigger and that is not what I said. In fact, in Mr. Yarmer's complaint directly, um, he tried to take a a quote of what I said and twist it. If he would have continued that quote, it was me discussing the fact that people do have triggers and we are in control of our triggers. And I specifically said, you're gonna let that ruin your day. That is a choice. Individuals like myself who have undergone extensive treatment for PTSD over the years understand that we are in control of our triggers. That is the goal of PTSD treatment is to learn to control your own triggers so that you can live a normal fulfilling life. Hence the statement, you're going to let that ruin your day. You are choosing to let that trigger ruin your day. At no point in time did I say that fireworks are not a trigger. However, I did chastise a number of individuals in the combat veteran community who choose to let fireworks become a trigger that is going to ruin their day or choose to treat fireworks as if it puts them back into combat. I directly addressed the fact that fireworks do startle people and I shared my story of the night prior when I was startled by fireworks. However, the statement that fireworks put someone back into combat is an unrealistic statement because they don't sound anything like combat. That is akin to me saying the sound of someone tearing a piece of paper put me back into combat. They do not sound anything alike. Continuing on on Mr. Yarmer's statement specifically, and I want to address his specifically because he is a member of this community. You know, in his complaint, he he listed a number of articles which are opinion articles and are not actual studies. They are opinions of specific individuals. But even in the study or the the articles that he referenced, they specifically state that individuals who experience PTSD generally go through temporary difficulty adjusting and coping, but with time and care, they get better. Those are in the articles that he listed. Taking it further to the the signs and and everything else, um, I would like to point to a an individual, Mr. Scott Faith, who is a longtime veteran of the special operations community. He is a contributor to Havoc Journal, which is one of the most well-known veteran journals on the planet right now. And he specifically states, to me, these signs are the veteran equivalent of a Facebook humble brag. It's basically saying, hey, I'm a veteran. I want you to acknowledge my specialness, feel sorry for me and give me special treatment without actually having to say, hey, I'm a veteran. I want you to acknowledge my specialness, feel sorry for me and give me special treatment. These signs are a physical manifestation of the belief that many veterans have that the American people owe us something. He further states, your signs aren't going to help anything. In fact, they are going to make it worse. They cause us to see ourselves as a class separate from our fellow citizens and it causes our peers to see us as dangerous, broken, fragile or as something to be feared. The fact of the matter is, is that the statements I made, while unpopular, are factually correct and they are backed up by the science. I can provide a number of journals, a number of studies and a number of sources available to show that my statements are backed up by the science. Granted, my verbiage may not have been the preferred verbiage for some, but the fact of the matter is my statement is factual, um, whether people want to agree with it or not. As as far as your statement specifically, Gus, uh, on May 11th, I would encourage you to go back and watch that video because the first situation of yelling actually happened from Counselor Purdy. When he yelled over the top of me and said, you're not going to silence me, Mayor. And I specifically addressed this later on that you openly felt the need to chastise me for raising the volume of my voice because you didn't feel the need to chastise your fellow council member for raising the volume of his voice initially. Uh, and so I find that complaint to be completely without merit. Continuing on from the May 11th meeting, the the fact of the matter is, is is whether you agree with it or not, the many members of the community agree that uh, you were dishonest. I amended my statement because I recognized that what I had initially stated was not accurate to the video. But the fact of the matter is, a number of individuals sent you emails regarding their stance and those emails were not forwarded to the council. Now, given the uh, the seriousness of the topics that we were discussing, it would have made a whole lot of sense that any correspondence you received be forwarded to the council. That's doing your due diligence and making sure that all council members are informed. And that did not happen. A lie of omission is still a lie. That situation notwithstanding, I stand by my statement. I feel you were dishonest. A lie of omission is a lie. As far as sanctioning and and stripping me of uh, my my voice as the uh, or my my position as the the spokesperson from the council, I would encourage you to go back and listen to the recording from that executive session. I was the one who said, I'm more than happy to allow someone else to be the spokesperson for the council. I offered that up. That's not a sanction. That was my idea, saying, please, if you guys have an issue with the way I'm communicating with the community, by all means, have someone else be the spokesperson for the council, but I will not change how I am communicating with the community. The community is responsive to it. And I don't, I mean, I I would ask the the rest of the council after this is over. I I don't recall any suspension. We simply made a discussion. We had a discussion and simply said, hey, we're gonna go ahead and appoint someone else as the spokesperson for the council. That was all that occurred. As far as the code of conduct is concerned, the the code of conduct is subjective in many regards as to what is treating individuals professionally and treating individuals with respect. Personally, I think having forthright discussion and being direct with someone is respectful. The environment where I come from, raising your voice is not something that is frowned upon. Now, if you are coming from an environment where raising your voice is frowned upon, that is, that is your subjective interpretation of my actions. As far as uh, the complaints we received in general, I would also point out that uh, we received three messages in support of my statement. And all three of those individuals are combat veterans. So at the very least, we can leave this conversation saying that this is a divisive issue and you and I are on different sides of this divisive issue. But to try and take my statement and turn it into something that is some sort of an attack on the veteran community or something that that warrants me resigning the position is ludicrous, in my opinion. You brought up that there's individuals who, you know, know nothing about you and calling you names. As this situation carried on, I received a number of screenshots of a conversation that you participated in, Gus, with a number of individuals who know nothing about me and were calling me names. And in that conversation, you solicited complaints against me. So I find the fact that we received the majority of these complaints from individuals who do not live in Almsville and the fact that you were soliciting complaints from individuals to really lessen the argument that's trying to be made against me. The fact of the matter is, going out and soliciting complaints against someone negates any actual complaints that were coming from the community. If we take it down to strictly our community, we had one individual in our community who complained about the statement. We had one individual from our community who was in support of the statement. From the council, we have you who are against my statement, against the statement that I made and I as a combat veteran who am in support of the statement that I made. So again, at the very least, we are dealing with an issue that is very divisive in the veteran community. I happen to know that a a I happen to know that a large chunk of the combat veteran community finds the entire idea of fireworks being a trigger to be somewhat laughable. Now, coming from a medical background, I do know that there are some individuals that are startled by fireworks, and that startled response can be a trigger. But nowhere in my statement did I say that PTSD doesn't exist. Nowhere in my statement did I attack veterans. Nowhere in my statement did I belittle veterans. Nowhere in my statement did I belittle anyone with PTSD.
Are you feeling? Gentlemen, gentlemen, before Gus, before you reply, I'm gonna step in on this, and I'm gonna step in on this more as somebody who's neutral. Okay? So I'm gonna start with that. I have talked to Derek about, on numerous occasions, about the way that he communicates with the public, and he contested that. He often says, "I mother him, I say, 'I big sister him.'" There's a number of things that I do agree with with Derek, and there's a number of things that I don't. And I will let everybody know, 50% of the time, I don't like him. 50% of the time, I remember he loves kittens, and I love him. But I don't let the way that I feel about our mayor personally affect the way that we communicate within the meeting. Now, so there has been a time, and I'm going to, as much as I, I don't like to agree with Derek, but I do sometimes. I don't like, like, because I said, 50% of the time, I don't like him. So that being said, I think I really 100% believe that this is two adult men, three adult men, who don't like each other personally. I've even text you and said, "I normally don't make it a habit to get in the middle of pissing matches between men." I've told this to Derek. Now, I'm gonna speak a little more frankly than I do. I usually maintain a pretty level professional appearance in public, and I, and I've talked to Derek about that. So I've talked to the way that he communicates. We've had this conversation today, in fact. When I don't like things that he does, I talk to him directly, directly. If I don't feel that I can talk to him directly, I bring somebody in. I've brought Nico into our conversations. Why? Because it's a third party that I believe could be neutral. Does that make sense? So I believe, I cannot attest to anything about combat veterans and PTSD in that area. What I can speak on is PTSD in different areas. I've been at the St. Hospital for 12 years. For 12 years, I've dealt with very, very dangerous people. 50 to 60 hours a week, I am in flight or flight mode. I have PTSD, and it is short-term. At one point, I will agree with Derek in this. If somebody is following their treatment care plan, and they're doing everything that they need to do, eventually it will become inactive. My PTSD was inactive for four and a half years. At one point, I decided, "I don't wanna do this anymore. It's too hard." I am not a person to share my personal life, but I'm sharing this. So when I stop doing the things that I need to do, then that becomes active. Okay? That, but it's two different types of things. My triggers are gonna be different from a combat war veteran. Okay? I also talked to Derek about these complaints, and I believe this is something that we should be discussing in an executive session. He did say, for transparency reasons, he wanted to have it openly, which I also agree with. The reason I wanted to discuss this in an executive session first was because you guys don't like each other, and I don't feel that it's appropriate to be battling out when it's a pissing match between men. Now, that's my personal opinion. Okay? So you comparing his actions with Jim's actions, I don't think it's the same, and this is why I don't think it's the same. Okay? So first of all, I believe in our freedom of speech, right? We have the right to say whatever we want to say. Whatever Derek says on his personal page, whatever you say on your personal page, whatever Jim says on his personal page, that's, that's your guys' prerogative. I don't have a problem with that. What I had a problem with Jim is when he used his official email to tell a citizen to take their opinions and put them where the sun don't shine. That I had a problem with. That's where I believe that he went wrong. So I believe that Derek does have his disclaimer, and I told him today, "You have this disclaimer on your page, and because of that, I think that's the only reason that you can get away with what you're saying." Do I believe he probably should have put this on his personal page? Yes. I think this is a message that probably should have gone on his personal page. But he does have that disclaimer. So whatever issues you guys have with Derek, or myself, or Nico, or anybody else, it needs to be, like, if I don't like you and you don't like me, I'm okay with that. Half the time, I don't like Derek, and I'm okay with that, and he knows that. I don't let that affect the way that I run my seat on council, and I don't let that affect the way that people communicate with me. Does that make sense? Now, when people complain about Derek, people have complained to me about him, I don't tell them, "Send me your complaint." I tell them, "Send your complaint to the city. Send it to Ron."
And that's exactly what I did in this situation as well, just so you know.
I read the screenshots.
No, you didn't, Gus.
Sent them to you.
I told folks if they wanted to CC me, they could, but I did send them copies of the.
No, 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 you didn't, Gus. I have the screenshots. The first statement on that screenshot is, "You can send your complaints to me at gbedwell@almsville.us, or, if you would like," and then you linked the city contact us form. I have the screenshots, and I am more than willing to provide them to the council. Not only that, it was, it was a post that was directly made as an attack on me that you were tagged in, and you came in and asked people to provide their comments to the city. Individuals who are not part of the discussion, individuals who are not combat veterans, individuals who are not a part of this community.
Okay, so, now that I'm speaking, I did see those screenshots, Gus, and that's exactly the way that Derek explained it. That's exactly the way the conversation went. First, you told people to send the complaints to you, and then you said, "Or you can send it." Anytime I told people to complain, I told them, "Please, send it to the city. If you do not feel comfortable, send it to me, and I will forward it." I always make it clear that it's not just a one-on-one communication. Always gonna go to the city, that I will be a mediator. But I don't, I don't feel that that's what your intention was. I don't feel that your intention was to be a mediator. I really feel that this is a personal attack against somebody that you don't like. And that doesn't hap, like, if you wanna talk about code of conduct, and you're going to accuse somebody of not following the code of conduct, that's the very same issue. You're taking it upon yourself to make a personal attack. And again, this is what I said. This is why I believe this is a pissing match between two men. And gentlemen, it needs to stop.
I do wanna point out one thing, just as a matter of the situation, right? The email from Mr. Yarmer was one that was sent to the counselors, not to the city directly. And as soon as I was made aware of it, I said, "Send that to the city. Make sure it gets in the packet."
So I want Jason to know.
Obviously, I disagree with what he said.
I want Jason to know.
But I want that to be a part of our packet. I want that to be a matter of record because I have that level of integrity. And that is not something that occurred in our May 11th discussion, and there is a stark difference.
I want Jason to know, because he's gonna watch the video. I don't see any of these. I want him to know, I got that email, and the first thing I did was I talked to Derek with a third party and said, "What is going on with this email?" Why? Because I believe that is the appropriate route, is to address him directly, and if things can't be met, then we bring it forward. So again, gentlemen, whatever dislikes we have between one another is not gonna help the city. We do have one person who was a resident that complained, and that was Jason. And Jason, I want you to email me or everybody else anytime that you, like, that you have a complaint. I really do. I would rather get 15 residents than have no interaction with anybody. If I don't get back to you, I'm sorry. Sometimes our life happens. But I want you to know, like, it's gonna get forwarded. And I tagged Ron, and I said, "Ron, put it with a pile. I'm sure there's a pile."
Even if Jason had sent it directly to me, I still would have forwarded, like, that, that is the right thing to do.
So I.
Any correspondence that I receive from a citizen, whether it is directly to me, complaining to me, if it is going to my, I'm gonna forward it and make it a part of our packet. I, listen, Jason Yarmer and I don't, don't get along. We see things very, very differently on a great number of issues. I want him to continue to communicate with the city. I want him to continue to send his complaints to the city. I want them to be a part of the packet. Now, that may be because I had Jason Yarmer complaint bingo cards made up, but it could also be because I want to hear what community members have to say, even when I disagree with them.
So in regards to Derek's yelling and getting all hot and bothered over issues during meetings and correspondence online, I talked to him about that today, Gus, and I told him. So let's take my, my interaction in our last meeting while we were talking about raising, or two meetings ago, when we were talking about raising our garbage. I asked some very hard questions, and to me, I felt like I laid into public services, and I asked questions that aren't easy to ask, and I did that in a manner of not yelling or raising my voice. He said he didn't feel that I was, you know, being inappropriate. But I told him I was, but I did it without raising my voice. So, and Derek's reply was, "Angie, you and I have different personalities." So now, do I agree with that? No. Derek, do I think that you can be a little more tactful in your approach to the public? Yes. But I also think that's part of who you are. I think that's part of the reason that you got elected. Will I continue to, I'm gonna call it big sister you and not mother you because I'm not that old? Yes, I will. Now, I don't have, I don't have any problem doing that. Do I believe this level of complaint needs to be in an executive session, and then the information brought forward? Yes, and this is why, because it's very personal attack. If Ron himself just said, if he has a complaint against him, he would rather talk about it in an executive session, and then the findings be brought forward. Because it is personal. It's personal because you guys are taking it personally. At the end of the day, gentlemen, we need to separate ourselves. I did it with the whole marijuana thing. Do I believe in using marijuana? No. We just talked about it, Derek. We talked about it for PTSD and nightmares and all that stuff. I don't, I don't wanna use it. I don't want to. Do I believe in people's right to vote? Yes. I'm not gonna push my personal belief onto the council, onto the residents of this town. That's the expectation I expect from everybody on this council. I'm done. I'm done yelling at you guys. I'm done lecturing. That is my piece.
So everything everybody just said, I heard what you said. Angie, I heard what you said, Derek, as well. But I think you guys didn't hear some of the things that I said. And that is, you're focusing on one thing, and that is the most recent comment about veterans. My complaint that I presented here today has been your conduct both on social media and in meetings for about the last two years. And Angie, to address what you said, I have tried to address things with Derek in person, or not necessarily in person, but in personal messaging. I did do it in person, as Derek referenced earlier in his term. The bottom line, though, is he continues to violate the procedures guide, and I'm sorry, Derek, is not subjective, but is what we agreed to. It's what we agreed to conduct ourselves as counselors, to not be unprofessional and discourteous and disrespectful to each other and the public. And Derek, I'm sorry, you have been that. You have continued to do that, and you continue to create an environment that's very divisive in this world and very divisive out in social media and the community. And I wanna remind you, for folks who think that I don't like you, that's not true. Matter of fact, I'll just remind you back to the recall that when the recall happened, I had people come to me and say, "Hey, Gus, now that you're on council, or you're gonna think about going to council, would you put a sign in your yard?" And I never did. And I told those people, the reason I did not was because I wanted to stay as neutral as possible throughout this whole thing. I was very clear in the very beginning that I was not for the recall, and why was it for the recall? But I was also part of the committee that helped to look at the safety fee and address some of those things. And I'll point out that Jason Yarmer and I had a very interesting conversation. I wouldn't call it heated, but it was definitely a little bit higher level, where he was very supportive of you and felt like I had not supported you. And I explained to him, "No, that's not the case. If anything, I've tried to do everything I can to be supportive of you as mayor and Nico and Angie as coming in." As a matter of fact, when you guys first got elected, what did I do? I reached out to all three of you to sit down and have conversations, which Nico and Derek, we did. So all along throughout this entire process, I've been very courteous. I have not gone back and slandered you. I have not complained about any of you. But there's been videos saying things that were not so positive about me, and there's been community members who took those videos and the emotions of those videos, and not only just about me, but also about other members of this council. And so my point here is that the veteran's comment was the straw that broke the camel's back. You didn't need to make that comment, and it wasn't from a personal Facebook page. It was from a page titled, "Derek Clevinger, Mayor of Almsville." That's not a personal Facebook page. That is a Facebook page representing as Mayor of Almsville. You don't have to agree with me on that, but that's exactly what it is. So my complaint is, listen, Counselor Case referenced people in a counseling meeting as fat, lazy ass, and then went on to social media, and you're right, Angie, used his own mayor, his own council email to make negative comments to people. That was inappropriate, and that was wrong. And Mayor Clevinger, you decided that you should formally ask him to resign based upon those instances. And I don't care what anybody else says, the things that you have said and the way you've addressed not only council members here incorrectly, but also community members. You have called community members assholes, toddlers, and other foul names. That is no different than Counselor Case. You do not need to do that. That is against our council guide, and it should not be done. So far as I'm concerned, yeah, I shouldn't went to executive meeting. We've tried that route, as Mayor Clevinger mentioned. I've tried to have a conversation with him. You've tried to have a conversation with him. At this point, I just don't understand why you continue to need to act that way and address things in a negative way. It doesn't help the community at large, and it's very unprofessional and, and just not appropriate for somebody of your position. So I'm personally at a place where, honestly, I was fully prepared that you would not say yes. So I'm gonna finish the rest of my comment and then be quiet, and here it is. You know, since you have chosen not to resign, and it is clear you will not adhere by the basic professional principles as laid out in the procedures guide, I want to make the following motion, and let the council decide. And I move that Mayor Clevinger be sanctioned once again for his continued inappropriate conduct. Since Mayor Clevinger has proven he does not, he does hold a bias against members of this council staff and members of the committee, which is a violation, again, of 6.16 in the procedures guide. It only seems fit that his ability to facilitate these meetings, be lead representative at ceremonial events, and vote on any matters be stripped of him immediately. This should also stay in place until such a time as a majority of this council has proved and agrees that he is willing to conduct himself both on social media and in council meetings, do not discredit upon himself, the council, and the city of Almsville. You don't have to agree with me, but there's a motion. Somebody wants to second it, and we wanna call for a vote.
Can we call for a discussion? We can call for a discussion.
Okay.
Can I, can I jump in here? I fully intend to stay as quiet as possible through this discussion. This particular motion, I, I don't know, I don't have it all based on memory, but there is some specific. Specific goals for the mayor within the city charter that obviously council could not. Change by a motion. So a sanction. Uh, can be a, it's basically a formal reprimand or letter of reprimand. Um. The, uh, public spokesperson. Uh, position is not meant through city charter and that's why we were able to change that, but I would be. Uh, I'd be hesitant if there was a motion to formally restrict. Um. The mayor's ability to preside over the meetings. I believe that may be in the city charter. So. A sanction from the council would really just look like that. It is a formal sanction verbally stating that. Um, uh. The action is inappropriate or something of that nature. So.
A censure essentially, right? Ron, like a censure?
It's a, it's a censure is what it is, but as far as, um, I would caution the council to. If you, if you want to entertain. Um, uh, some thing that limits authority, that that should be researched by the city attorney. I'm gonna go.
That's. Thank you. That's why I was. Oh, I was asking to move to discussion. Those were exactly all my questions. Um, and Gus, I do. So. Thank you, Ron.
Can I, can I address something real quick?
Yeah, just let me real quick and then.
Okay.
So with that, Gus, I, I. I want you to be aware that. I think this opens you up for the same possibility. I, I, I have to question your motivations. I don't think that. I don't think that your motivations are. Are pure. Which could. Be, you know, we could question the code of conduct on that. This is a. Some of your stuff does have merit. Uh, as far as the stuff that some things that Derek talks about, but I want you to know. The conversation that I had earlier with him and the way that he's presented himself tonight are. You said that obviously my conversations with him aren't working. I want you to know maybe about 80% of the time they do. Like I go in there and I talk with him and he calms down and he presents himself a little bit differently than the conversation that we had prior. So. Um. Not saying that it always works. I'm not saying that. I, I do think that Eric Derek is open. To constructive criticism. Your actions are questionable sometimes. Like I really do feel that this is a personal vendetta and.
So let me, let me, let me ask, what?
And the reason.
Do you want Angie to finish please?
The reason I feel.
No, please do what Angie finished.
The reason I feel that this is a personal vendetta is because. Like. You're, and maybe you're the only one willing to bring it up. You're. Um, there was a time Larry has brought up complaints about about Derek. Um. But you're consistently the one that's doing it and some of them, some of them have merit and parts of them have merit and parts of them I. I, I don't feel they do. Um. And then. The fact the screenshots show. You say, send your, send your complaints to me. And then I feel that you're covering and maybe I'm wrong. Okay, maybe it's my perception. So you're telling, you're telling people. You're going out and looking for complaints is what it looks like. Now, whether your intentions are that way or not, that's. That's between you and whatever, you know, it's between you and God or whoever. But that's the way it comes across for somebody that's coming in and saying. Like what the heck? It looks like you're going out. And looking for complaints from people and you're asking them to send them to you and then you're covering your butt by saying, if you don't want to send them to me, you can send them to the city. That's what it looks like, Gus. And that to me is questionable. Now, if that's not the case, then that's not the case, but that's what it looks like. So that's why I said in every correspondence that I have with people, I tell them. Send your complaints to the city. If you don't, and I let them know, if you don't feel comfortable, send them to me knowing that I'm going to forward them. And that's exactly what I did with Jason's. I got it. I sent it to Derek and said, and Nico and said. I want to talk about this. And the conclusion was. We're gonna have this on the agenda tonight. So. That's why I feel it's a personal vendetta. That's why I feel if you're going to ask this of Derek, that you're opening yourself up to the same thing. I'm going to question the code of conduct behind your behaviors.
Okay, so if Derek says that he has screenshots of me saying this. I'm open to having those screenshots presented because I'm telling you. When I sent it to the veteran community, I sent them the video. And I sent them the city of Almsville contact information. There were a couple, hold on, there were a couple of people. Who. I said, if you want to CC me in it. Or that I gave them my, my Almsville. Okay, but I did not say to any, anyone or all these people, I did not say, send it just to me. Okay? And I can show you a conversation I had with one particular individual who adamantly disagreed with me. And we had a really good conversation. And he ultimately said. You know what? You're not, you're right. It's not the thing that a mayor should say, but I agree with the conversation that. That he had. Right? And he's one of those people who oddly enough wrote in and said. I like this mayor. I, I agree with him in the formal complaint. So. I'm telling you that. I was very open with people. I even told them in my message, good or bad. What I wanted people to know was that. In the veteran community, I wanted them to know that there was a veteran who's an elected official who's saying irresponsible things. That are not helpful. In addition, in addition. Eric Clevenger, in the complaints that you have, you have a couple of combat veterans. Who have worked with veterans who reference the fact that they're combat veterans. That said. Hmm, no, this is not what I feel or seen.
Okay, let's go ahead and define combat veteran real quick because I know you are good friends with Brenda Powers. Brenda Powers is not a combat veteran. She deployed to Kuwait.
I'm not talking about Brenda Powers, I'm talking about lieutenant.
Gus, let me finish, let me finish.
Okay, that's right. Sorry, sorry, go ahead.
Brenda Powers deployed to Kuwait. Never saw any combat. Right? There is one individual who says, we had to deal with terrorists in the eighties. That. There's another individual who says, I'm a corpsman or was a corpsman for 13 years. Nobody references being a combat veteran. Not a one of them references being a combat veteran. Now, very quickly. I am, I am reading the screenshot. From you. Hello. In case anyone wants to post their opinion about this video. Please do so this weekend ahead of the city council's meeting. You can email me directly at gbedwell@almsville.us. And then you go back after the fact and say, oh, or, or also you can. Comment on the situation.
Okay.
I had one question and, and I'm gonna leave it at that. So of the correspondences that happen. In regards to soliciting complaints and this is, this is part of my opinion and so like. I, I want you to change my opinion. I want people to change my opinion. Okay? How many of those correspondence did you initiate yourself?
In me going out and talking with folks?
Yes. How many did you say, hey, I'm gonna send you this video, give me your opinion about it or I'm gonna send you this. How many did you initiate yourself?
Um, four or five of them.
It was only five.
There was, okay, hold on.
No, what I'm saying is the ones that. I know some of the names that are in there because yes, I sent them some information. I did send to other people in my veteran advocacy community. And, and I told them, and again, like I said, I told them, present your opinion either way.
Okay. So. This is why I would question your motive behind it. Instead of. Like, no, like, let's take this all from a learning experience, okay? At the end of the day, I know none of us are gonna agree on anything and this is why, okay? I told Derek. I really feel your method of communication to be a little more tactful. Derek, how many times have I said this to you? Like.
Many times. What was my response to you though, Angie?
Yeah.
And, and Nico was sitting right there at the Saturday market. Uh, this Saturday and, uh. Not, not to drag any, anybody else in, but I, I, I believe Colleen was standing there at the previous Saturday market where I had. Individuals directly tell me that. Part of the reason they want me to run again and part of the reason they appreciate me is that I'm real. And that I'm direct. And that I'm not a politician. Those are the things that the community appreciates about me. Now, I understand there's under other individuals who may not like that. But. It is what it is. Now. Angie, can I please a- address quickly the, the things that I wanted to address?
Yeah. I'm done.
Again, Gus, you, you say that, that my actions are against our procedures guide. Where does our procedures guide? Directly specify or define. What professional behavior is or what courteous behavior is?
So. So I would just ask you this way, I would answer the question this way. So. It says. It talks about counselors should avoid personal attacks on other counselors, city staff in particular, public. The council should treat each other in a courteous, respectful manner. Uh, to be courteous and professional at all times. Uh, praise in public and criticize in private. So, so let me ask you this question. Here's how I'm gonna ask it.
No, no, I'm, I'm asking the questions now, Gus. Right? It's my turn to talk.
Alright.
So, given that. It doesn't define that. I am saying that I, I feel my behavior is professional. Granted abrasive. But still professional. Right? You are saying it is not.
I am clearly saying it is not. That is correct.
We, we have a difference of opinion.
Right.
So. Our procedures guideline, because it is not directly defined, is subjective. Right? There are members of the community. Who have seen our videos. And who truly appreciate. The fact that I get passionate and I raise my voice and I am willing to, to address these things head on. Right? So, again, at the end of the day. At best, we can say, this is a difference of opinion. Right? Now, you are, you are perfectly allowed to have your opinion as I am allowed to have mine. But since this is subjective. The result is, no, I have not violated the procedures guide. Right? You feel I have, I feel I haven't. It is what it is.
So.
You said that I've, I've posted videos that are, are not very positive. Yeah. I have. Right? I am under no requirement whatsoever. Procedures guideline or not. To always at every moment be positive about everything this council does. This goes back to the first discussion we had where I openly stated that I wasn't going to change how I communicated with community and I offered the idea. That the, the council have their own spokesperson. Because I will not. To hear and pretend that everything we do is sunshine and roses. Right? If this council makes a decision that I am against. I will make sure the community knows that I was against that decision. I don't agree with it. Now, you don't like the way that I communicate with the community. That is your opinion. So be it. That's fine.
So. We have a motion on the floor.
I'm not done, Angie.
Sorry.
Okay, you, you brought up Jim. And, and his discussion, right? And, and, and what happened with his actions. Okay?
Which were inappropriate.
Used his city provided email. Now, I understand that, that you feel. That this Facebook page is somehow an extension of, of my position in the city. But I could turn around tomorrow and name it Derek Clevenger, President of the United States. That doesn't mean I am. That page is a page.
Like you are mayor of Almsville.
With the community. And it is a page that has a disclaimer on it that any messages posted are my personal opinion. Right? It is not an official. Page. It is not run by the city. It is not advertised by the city. The city has no involvement. It is a personal, it is, well, to say it is a professional page that is run by my personal account. So there is a very stark difference because Jim used his city provided email. To speak. To a community member in that manner. I am using a Facebook account that I created. To speak with the community. With that, you have said that I called community members assholes. Please find me a single instance where I directly attacked any single community member and called them an asshole. I have used the term asshole as a general statement, but find me one instance where I have attacked. A single individual and called them an asshole.
Okay. You have not. But.
I have not.
Your general.
I have not.
From a Facebook page that says Derek Clevenger, Mayor of Almsville.
Uh huh.
Put the perception. So what you, and then again, this is, this is us, like you said, disagreeing. And that's exactly what you're saying.
But it's not just us disagreeing, Gus. It's you trying to twist what has actually occurred.
Right?
I never called a community member an asshole. That did not happen.
We have a motion.
Asshole.
Okay, guys, we're.
I posted a video saying that if you're gonna give small business members a hard time about wearing a mask, you are the asshole. I did not directly address any community members. I did not call any specific community member an asshole. I used a general term.
So, uh, at the risk of, at the risk of, uh, jumping in here, uh, Angie's tried to do it. I think I'm a little. A little bit more adamant. I'll, I'll just jump in here. Um, I'm wondering if, uh. You know, it just as the discussion was unfolding, one of the things that we have to think about is. Um, we're gonna have conflicting personalities and we're not always gonna agree. We're not always gonna get along and everybody's got their own personalities. Those. Those, those are gonna be. One of the reasons why we try to do our yearly. Uh, retreat, which we missed this year unfortunately. Um. To some extent, we, we vet out a little bit of this. Um, discussion and conflict and we try to bond a little bit as a group and we missed that. I'm. I'm sitting here thinking to myself if. Perhaps once our new member isn't on board, we don't schedule just a video retreat. Um, hang on because that's gonna be a long video. Uh, but, um, at the risk of jumping in and, and offending any side of this conversation. I'm just wondering what benefit that this current, this continuation.
We're not getting anywhere.
We're not. We, we do have this motion on the floor and.
Yes, there is a motion on the floor.
That, um. If the council wants to push this forward, that it needs to be further investigated legality wise. Also, I would like to make an amendment to that because if we're going to push this forward. Part of that, Gus, you say there should be no personal attacks. That's what you quoted. And. Out of the five complaints that we got, you committed to soliciting. Four or five of them, that you went and sought out these complaints, which I believe is a personal attack. So. If. If Derek is going to be up for a letter of reprimand, I believe that's something that we need to look into for you as well.
Well, the, the motion was, was only for a, a sanction. On me, Ron, Ron discussed what that would entail. That is the motion. So.
And I want.
As the individual who presides over this, is there a second to that motion? I hear no second, so the motion dies.
Okay. I've said my piece. I'm happy with that.
I've, I've said mine. I think we're both good here, Gus. Yeah?
Sure.
Okay.
Further, I, this level of personal attack, this is why we. I don't feel we're getting anywhere. We're going to.
This is why God invented beer. Alright, that's where these discussions are supposed to be.
This is why we shouldn't have this in an administrative meeting and then bring the findings forward. So. That is why, this is why, because the way that this went, there's a lot of heated feelings. It is personal.
I wouldn't say. And to, to go back to Gus's point as well, I don't dislike Gus's person. Obviously, we are ideologically opposed on a great number of issues. I, I mean, if, if Gus were out on the street tomorrow and needed somewhere to stay, I wouldn't tell him no. I mean.
And me to likewise to Derek.
Just like him, alright? I. I, I think that's maybe just a difference in the way that males interact with each other and that's why a lot of times we just go out back, smack each other around and everything's good after that. But.
Gentlemen, I don't mean to continue to mother or big sister you. I just feel that.
Everyone's mommy.
Raining the testosterone a little bit.